Is doing the pledge of allegiance and presenting the colors, troop number thirteen, from Christ Community Church. The troop leader is Tim Sundell. Would ask if you would to stand for the invocation. We'll ask Commissioner Chalfant to have our invocation, and then we'll have the presentation of the colors.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we give thee thanks for this day and the opportunity to serve the people of Williamson County. Be with us as we deliberate. Guide us, direct us. We ask in the name of thy son, our Savior. Amen.
Ms. Anderson.
I have twenty-two present, two absent, Commissioner Cook and Commissioner Mr. Newt McCord.
Thank you. So, two absent for this evening's meeting. On the first item of consideration approval of minutes of the regular November fourteenth, two thousand and five county commission meeting minutes copies were mailed to each of the commission members. I'll entertain a motion to adopt. Motion is made and seconded to adopt and approve these minutes as presented in discussion on the minutes. See none? All in favor say aye. Opposed? So it's your, so ordered, minutes adopted. Apparently, the November twenty-second special call meeting, the minutes, not everyone received those, so we will resend those to everybody and take those up for consideration at our February meeting. So, the November twenty-second special minutes will be considered in February. Highway Commission minutes, these should have been sent to you by mail and presented to you. I'll entertain a motion to accept these. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Mills the second to accept and approve these minutes. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Unanimous adoption. Citizens Communication, I don't think we have anyone that's signed up tonight. We'll move on to Communications and Messages, proclamation honoring the Page High School marching patriots. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on the Page?
But if there are no representatives, that I...
You want to wait and have them back in February?
I would, I think that would be appropriate to have them back in February so that we can truly honor them with their fine achievements, if that would be...
Well, we'll do whatever the Commissioners would like. Good. Motion is made and seconded to defer to February. All in favor say aye. Opposed? So it deferred to February. Proclamation honoring the Ravenwood High School, T double A, double A, District five A, two thousand and five football champions. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Ford to defer to the February meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. As a part of Communications and Messages, we have some housekeeping that we need to take care of after, hopefully, we'll get the air conditioner running. First is Resolution one zero six nineteen. This is the resolution that has been presented for us, that is being pulled from consideration. Commissioner Barnwell has pulled that, so that's pulled. Resolution one oh six dash eight.
I don't have nineteen. Where's nineteen?
That's the first one under other on the last page. That's been pulled. Commissioner Hayes, would you, would you like to just make a comment on that, please?
Certainly. Oh, we found after the vote by our solid waste department or solid waste committee, municipal solid waste board, that there were a couple of things that had not, as we had believed, been agreed upon by Brentwood, and they will need to have a little further study. So, this will come back before this body, as it does have to, since it relates to an intergovernmental municipal compromise. And so, we will be seeing that probably next month. There is a great need for us to push on, but we want to make sure we do it right as we go through it.
Commissioner Williams, would you like to address the road list, please?
Well, on the consent agenda, the resolution... One day zero six day seven.
Yes, sir.
I would like to have that pulled from the consent agenda just for discussion and get the mechanics of it, of how it's supposed to work.
Okay. So, we'll, we'll pull the road list off of the consent agenda and take it under consideration. And then, we, we're pulling Resolution number one oh six sixteen. This is a public hearing resolution. It's under the front page relative to amending the off-site septic easement, so that's being pulled. And Commissioner Walton, understand it'll be back in February. Thank you. Also, another point of information for you, if you would, in, in front of each of your places tonight, you have a new packet of material on Resolution number one oh six thirteen. When this was originally copied and mailed out to you, there was a page left out, so to keep from you having to shuffle and find out where that page goes, you've been given a complete set of the material for Resolution one oh six thirteen, and that is laying at your desk this evening. Very well. Moving on, on the agenda, we'll move on then to reports of county offices. County Mayor Rogers Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, you've got a very lengthy agenda tonight, I'll ask David to give us a budget overview.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, in your packet, we find the report on the privileged tax for the month of November. On track to have another great year as far as privileged taxes concerned, and also in your packet, or I believe was actually placed at your seat tonight, was the October and November budget report. Having not met in December, we were behind one month, so caught you up on that, and everything is on target there. The one thing that I apologize is not in your packet is our Conference Center report, and I'm sure that's just because I failed to give staff a copy. We'll catch you up on that next month.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Coleman? I see none. Thank you, David. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, that, as I said, you've got a very lengthy agenda today, and I'm sure I'll be jumping up here on several items, so I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Any questions of the mayor at this point? I see none. Thank you, sir. Director of Schools, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
Good evening. Thank you, first of all, for postponing the proclamations for our schools. You may or may not be aware that students went back to school today from their winter breaks, so it's possible that there just wasn't enough notice. I'm sure there was enough notice last month, but in terms of being back in school this month, to get everybody together and get them here, I'm sure they will be here for your next meeting. We appreciate your honoring them the way that you want to honor them. We thank you very much for that. Just a few quick updates. We are totally moved into the new Franklin High School building, so we are scheduled to start demolition of some of the other pieces, the old pieces that will be going away next week. So, we are very excited about that. It appears that there is going to be an open house on January twenty-second. You should be receiving an invitation to that, so that it will be then open to the public to come in and see the good work that's been done rebuilding Franklin High School. I understand that there was an open house for the students and their parents yesterday, and I think about eighty percent, what I've been told is about eighty percent of the student body and their parents did show up yesterday to see what the buildings would be like. And I think you'll be very proud of it when you have an opportunity to go and go through it. And while they have now moved out of Portables, except for a couple of art classes, Middle College High School has moved from Nashville State Tech into the Portables on the Franklin High Campus until their new quarters can be completed, which we hope will be by the beginning of April. And that project's going very well, too. So, we're just continually shifting children until we can get them in the right places, and they're very cooperative and flexible with us, and so are their parents. And we thank you for what you've done to make all these opportunities available to our students. We also are moving into Sunset Middle School. We do have a new principal there that we named last month, and we have decided to go ahead and move the sixth graders who were in the elementary portion over to the middle school portion, since it is now ready. We will be having sixth and seventh grade there next year, and then sixth through eighth there the following year. We are also working very diligently to secure the property for the two new elementary schools, property which you have already funded, and we appreciate that. We think we have a good location for Spring Hill. We are working with a property owner there. We don't have a completed contract, but we, we're very hopeful of that. We are having less fortune in Nolan'sville, but we will find some property there. We are working on hiring architects to complete the projects that you began the funding for earlier this year, and you will see us coming here probably next month for more funding so we can continue those projects. And those were the things I wanted to make sure you knew about this evening. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Questions? Anyone wishing to ask Director Sharber? I see none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Subbing for Dennis Miller tonight is, Dennis is not able to be here. Don is here. Any, any questions on the hospital report? All of you received this information in the mail? Any questions that you'd like addressed while he's here? I see none. Any other committee wishing to report at this time? Commissioner Langston?
Well, I'd like to call notice to the fact that we're moving the Public Health Committee from the third Thursday meeting to the first Thursday in the month, and our next meeting will be on February the second at five thirty, and we hopefully can accommodate all our members at that point.
Thank you, sir. That, that information is included here in the material that you've been given tonight. I'd also have you bring your attention, there are several committees that have canceled their meeting. The Human Resources Committee, scheduled for Monday, the sixteenth, has been canceled due to the holiday. We also have the notice that Commissioner Moon is canceling the law enforcement, public safety committees that are scheduled for Tuesday. And then, if you would, look at this assignment of the committee schedules, because there have been some shifts around to meet with those changes in schedule that is given to you. So, it's this list that's presented, it's laying at your desk tonight, that shows the component, the makeup of the committees, as well as the date that that committee is normally scheduled to meet. So, if you would, please refer to that, because there have been several changes. There's no further report from the committees. We'll move on. Excuse me, Commissioner Hayes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted the committee and all to know about a special recognition at the Keep America Beautiful Award presentation in Orlando, Florida, December the eighth. Keep Williamson Beautiful received an honor of being an outstanding participant of the Keep America Beautiful Award Show. It said, "This award recognizes the high performance achieved in two thousand and five, which is measured against the Keep America Beautiful standards of excellence." That has to do with all the education, litter control, and all the things that Keep Williamson Beautiful professed and, and worked on, had scores of volunteers, and in two thousand and five, it was led very aptly by Tommy Murdock, as well as our own recycling group and our solid waste department. So, we had a host of volunteers who pitched in, we had a host of communities who helped, and it's congratulations to all of them.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Any other Commissioner wishing to report anything? I see none. We'll move on to elections and appointments. Election and appointment made by the county mayor to the Williamson County Regional Planning Commission. This term expires in March of oh six. Resigned Dotson Randolph. Nomination Susan Fisher. Commissioner Walton, the motion. Commissioner Brockman the second. Any further discussion on this nomination? I see none. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption. County Commission Agricultural Committee, two-year terms expiring January of oh eight. County Commissioner Lewis Green. Nomination Commissioner Green. Commissioner Hayes, the motion. Second Commissioner Walton. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous. County Commissioner Judy Hayes. Nomination Judy Hayes. Motion by Commissioner Lynch. Second by Commissioner Mills. All in favor say aye. Opposed? So ordered. Unanimous. Farmer Fred Johnson. Nomination Fred Johnson. Commissioner Hayes. Second Commissioner Brockman. Commissioner Moon.
Unless Mr. Johnson's move, he lives over the hill from me, and he's in the fourth district, and the nominee information has him in the fifth district. Just a point of clarification.
Okay. So, let the record reflect, then he's in the fourth district and not the fifth. Any other discussion on Fred Johnson's nomination? All in favor say aye. Opposed? So ordered. Show it unanimous. And then, farm woman Joanne Osborne. Nomination is Sharon Hatcher. Commissioner Hayes. Commissioner Lynch the second. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of all of the agricultural committee members for a new term. Notaries, all of these have been presented to you. They are included in the packet. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Commissioner Wilson, the motion. Commissioner Moon the second. Discussion on the notaries. See none? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the notaries. Now, we're to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have three items. The road one oh six seven has been pulled for consideration, so that leaves us with Resolution one oh six ten, and then one oh six eleven. These are funds in lieu that we're adopting tonight. I'll entertain a motion to approve those two items. Commissioner Walton. Commissioner Brockman the second. Further discussion on the consent agenda, including these two resolutions. I see none? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Show it unanimous adoption of the consent agenda. Then, we'll pull now off of the consent agenda for discussion, Resolution one oh six seven. This is a resolution, I'll entertain a motion to get it on the floor. Sir second. Commissioner Williams, the motion. Commissioner Hewlett the second to put this on the floor for consideration discussion. Commissioner Lynch, you're the sponsor. Would you like to introduce this resolution, please, sir? It's already, it's already moved. We're discussing.
It's approximately the same as it's always been with exception this year. They've been divided into four categories, and I would like for Bobby Clark to get up and explain if he doesn't mind.
Counselor? Mr. Cook?
Cook, I mean, Sir Clark. Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I've been asked to basically give you a brief overview of this process. To begin, the highway superintendent every year will take the roads, and he will measure them. From what I understand, he actually did go out and measure every road in the county the past couple of months to form this list. The roads are then, he suggested classifications. These, there are four classifications under Tennessee law that can be used. Williamson County's list in front of you includes all four classifications with a minimum width of about eighteen feet. Included with the road list, you'll see, are a list of changes that were made in the past year, okay? Roads that were either removed, roads that were changed in width, accepted. Those things will be included in your report. Once the highway superintendent makes his recommendation, it comes to this party in the January meeting, and you all vote on it. Now, you can either pass, you can amend the road list if there's something in there that you believe that needs to be amended. That's basically all you have the authority to do, except amend, change the road list in some minor way, or change a road to another classification. Should you have information, it's another width. I will be glad to address any questions if you want.
Any questions? Mr. Cook, would you please, so indicate, Commissioner Williams?
As a practical matter, any road that has the width that it is right now will have to remain that, that width, would it not?
No, not exactly. In theory, yes, okay? But say we have a road that is a fourth classification, okay? I believe it's eighteen to twenty feet, between eighteen and twenty feet for the classification, okay? Say this year get worked on, and now the new width is twenty-two feet. Next year, when it comes back around, it'll be increased to the next classification, and you'll get that little report on the front again, and it'll explain that change. Now, in theory, it could also go down in width if you have a classification three road, and for some reason, they stripped it and made it thinner in width, it could actually go down in classification, in theory. The main thing to know about it is that they're classified by width.
The next year, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
Next year, when it comes, when the same list, because this is the first year we've classified all four classifications correct, and next year, when the list comes around, it would show what changes have been, or been recommended, either with being widened, or, as you said, in theory, it could be lowered. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, I guess, all our information is, before, we only had the two road classifications. Now, we have four road classifications.
In theory, we did have the private act that did limit the road classifications to two different road classifications. That was amended, I believe, back in July and approved by this body.
Right. As Chairman of the Special Roads Committee, I've been wrestling with this, these issues, and so, I'm trying to get the definitions of how this is going to work. Can it be, can this be changed during the year?
Mr. Chairman, it cannot be changed. The classifications of a road can be changed once a year. That's in your January session. They will be accepted throughout the year and physically changed if they are, but the actual classifications will remain the classification until the next January term, when you'll see the list again.
Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, that answered my question. I wanted to know...
Thank you, sir.
...at what frequency amendments could be presented?
Thank you. Commissioner Forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see a number of roads that are on this acceptance list that we have added during the year, but yet they're not on the January two thousand and six road list here. Can somebody explain that to me?
They should all be on your road. As you'll see, they're done by district. You have four different ones.
I understand that. For instance, on, on page one of the addition list, I see, in the northeast section, and I just picked that because that's where I am, Foltz, and the road name is Cassie Court, C.A.S.S.I.E. Court, but it's not on our, our road list, at least the one that was in my pocket. And it, it seems like, at least the ones I checked on here, none of the additions are on the road list, so I'm curious about that.
Okay, well, I'm sure that with the highway department, because it is Eddie's list, I mean, this is Eddie's amendments to you. Those are the roads that have been accepted, have been changed, so when they do the new list, those will be pinned into them. I don't know if they didn't have time to do it.
But this is from January of oh, January of oh five. No, January of oh five is when we added these in. These are the additions from all year, but yet they're not on this list. So, I have a problem voting on a road list. It seems like there's roads that we've added throughout the year that aren't on here.
Mr. Hood, would you come forward? You heard the question there.
I'm missing something completely.
There's some that appear to be missing. Any, any comment?
That road you're talking about is in the subdivision road list, and it's on, well, I don't know what page, but it's in, it's in Commissioner folks's area, and it's on, I'm looking right at it, Cassie Court, in Rector subdivision.
Okay, so the first one is ones that are not in the subdivision, and then we got the subdivision behind that.
The first ones is just a road. The second section, that's the subdivision road.
Got it. Thank you.
Did I clear that up, Commissioner? Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the top of, excuse me, on the top of page two, I see fifty-three fifty-foot right-of-way roads, and they're in three different classifications. Could somebody explain that to me?
Mr. Chairman, the roads are not classified by the actual right-of-way width. They're actually classified by the width of the road bed, so...
Okay.
Think further, Commissioner? Commissioner Lynch?
There's two hundred-foot of road out there, across the road from me, that I-40 cutoff that has not been named. It was brought up for the Highway Commission the other day, and they are going to rename it, so in February, we will amend the road list to rename, to name that road. It won't have anything to do with the classification, but it will just rename that two hundred-foot road.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, sort of a point of clarification on the road width. I spoke with Superintendent Hood earlier, and there, especially some of these older roads, when the road width is given, it might vary somewhat. So, what has been listed here is an average, so there might be a road that is less than twenty-four feet in a number of places, but on average, it might be closer to twenty-two. So, I'm just wanting to make that point, because I had a particular point about a width of a road, and they've used the entire road to come up with an average.
Thank you. Commissioner Hester?
Thank you, sir. With respect to Commissioner Moon and Commissioner Wilson, I would like to express my concern about McEwen Drive, from the Franklin City limits over to Clover, Clovercroft, or, let me see, to possibly Wilson Pike. But this is an east-west corridor that is widely used, and it's very narrow, so I'm just expressing my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment that you may be aware, of course, that, that used to be the old Liberty Pike, which is McEwen, and now they're in the process of widening and going through with McEwen interchange, which will make a huge difference. There's a lot of construction and roadwork that is going on presently, and we will have a new complete exit off of sixty-five. And hopefully, that will alleviate a lot of the problem, but it will be a while before McEwen will be able to be widened or done anything to because of the new McEwen interchange.
Thank you. Just as a point of clarification, you see the resolution is to adopt the two thousand and five Williams County road list, so that you are aware, the road list itself actually has the January two thousand and six date on it. That's the date that this was printed and prepared. We're actually approving the 2005 Williamson County Road List, so don't be confused to the date. It's at the top of each of these sheets, says January 206. That's just the date this was printed, so make that as a part of the record, if you would, Mr. Clark, and make sure that that's in the record. Any other discussion on Resolution 106.7? I see none. It's loaded on the machine. If you're ready to vote, in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wishes to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution, road list unanimously adopted for the year 2005. Next resolution, Resolution Number 106.13. This is under the zoning, part of our agenda, resolution to amend the ordinance, the zoning ordinance text regarding farm wineries, originally adopted on April 18, 1988. Commissioner Walton? Let's have the public hearing first. This resolution is open for consideration. If you're here, wishing to address the body, if you would, please make your way to the microphone, identify yourself, give us your name and address, and we will entertain your comments. Anyone wishing to speak? My last call. Public hearing is closed. Resolution Number 106.13, resolution to amend the zoning ordinance text regarding farm wineries, originally adopted on April 18, 1988. Commissioner Walton?
Planning Commission voted for, eight-four-zero against.
Would you move it, Commissioner, to get on the floor?
Move for approval.
Sir's second. Commissioner Davis, the second. Thank you. Commissioner Walton?
Planning Commission voted eight-four-zero against. This would allow a farm winery, which the Planning Commission feels like it would be a tourism thing, and I can refer to Joe Horn and-
Any questions on this? This is amending the farm winery zoning ordinance. Any questions? Commissioner Moon?
Mr. Chairman, the zoning in suburban estate, if I'm not mistaken, the minimum lot size is one acre. Does this theoretically allow for a winery to be on a one-acre subdivision lot?
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moon, the text amendment requires fifteen acres for a farm winery. You're correct that the suburban estate ordinarily requires one acre. However, we've indicated in here that for a farm winery, fifteen acres would be required.
And one further question. County crossroads has typically been limited to small grocery stores, gas stations, or what have you. You all are making the change to allow a winery in the CC District?
Yes, sir. It's probably not likely that one would occur in the CC District. They do have to have fifteen acres, and there needs to be an agricultural component to it as well. At least three acres would need to be in production, so it's probably not likely that it would occur there, but it would be theoretically possible.
Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Anyone else wishing to address? Commissioner Williams?
Just for Mr. Moon's information, I'm involved in a matter that involves a winery right now, actually, two wineries, and they're very highly controlled by both federal and state, through the ABC and the Federal Alcohol Backup People, and so, they're very closely monitored and watched.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? Resolution 106.13 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record of vote, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, twenty-two, yes. Moving now to public hearing regarding Resolution Number 106.14, resolution to amend the Williamson County zoning ordinance, originally adopted on April 18, 1988, regarding septic tanks, regarding septic disposal areas. I'll entertain this, I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to address this resolution, please come forward, identify yourself. Anyone? Public hearing is closed. We'll now entertain Resolution Number 106.14, resolution to amend the Williamson County zoning ordinance, originally adopted on April 18, 1988, regarding septic disposal areas. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Second. Commissioner Brockman, discussion, please.
Again, I'd like to defer to Mr. Horn.
Planning Commission, report, please, Mr. Walton.
Oh, eight-four-zero against.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Horn, would you like to introduce this, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. What we have before us with this proposed amendment, we're trying to handle about three things at once. I'll go to the easiest one first. First of all, within the zoning ordinance, when it was adopted in eighty-eight, a series of septic tables indicating area for septic fields was within that. That was officially, that was officially negated by the adoption of the septic regulations by Sewage Disposal Management Department back in 2000. Secondly, there was a nomenclature issue where, at the time of the adoption of the ordinance, this was called the Environmental Department. They are now Department of Sewage Disposal Management, so we used that opportunity as well. Lastly, I guess I possibly should have led with this, was, under the current zoning regulations, off-site septic variances were identified as being approved by the Planning Commission as a variance. That was probably an inexact use of language. What we found is variance, Tennessee state law requires that variances occur through, via the Board of Zoning Appeals. What we have done for platted lots is, we are recommending that off-site septic variances be heard by the Planning Commission as variances to the subdivision regulations, which they do have the power to do so. We just felt like this was cleaner, and at the same time this was happening, we took care of some housekeeping matters that have been languishing for some time now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Horn, explain in simple words just what is the changes?
I'm not sure if I can do it in simple words, Clyde. You've known me too long for that.
Well, go ahead, then.
At any rate, one, under the current zoning ordinance, when someone has an off-site septic variance, your lot is here, your septic is on a separate piece of property, it required a variance under the, under Chapter Five of the zoning ordinance. What we have found upon further research is, the Planning Commission does not really have the power to vary the terms of the zoning ordinance. So, we removed that language, and at the same time we were working on this, moved that power to the Planning Commission under the subdivision regulations, okay? The other two, Mr. Clyde, were pretty simple. Department of Sewage Disposal Management didn't exist when we adopted the ordinance, so we removed all references to that and put the new name in. And the third thing is, we had septic tables within the body of the zoning ordinance that are no longer used by Department of Sewage Disposal Management, determining what inadequate septic area was there. It was redundant and misleading, and we felt like this was the appropriate time to remove that. It wasn't very simple, but-
Thank you. Other questions of Mr. Horn? Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Horn, would this only pertain to platted lots?
Platted lots, yes, sir, it would. There are still a number of unplatted lots in the county, and they would be subject to private agreements typically, typically originating through the Department of Sewage Disposal Management. This would only deal with platted lots, and that is where our big problem is. It is-
Without mentioning the location or anything, I know where there was a business in one area of the county that had access to land that would perk very well off the actual property that the business was on, but it was in very close proximity. Would this stop that, preclude that from happening, or would this help that happen? Would it have no effect at all?
I think it could. It could happen that way. Right now, again, you get into different nomenclature, you get in different parts when properties were created. Largely, anything prior to 1988 that existed, we recognize as legal. Anything after 1988, less than five acres, has got to have a plat in place. It could theoretically be handled if an off-site septic easement were needed, under two things. If it were treated as an unplatted lot, it would be something that would happen through Department of Sewage Disposal Management, would be recorded with, be recorded in Ms. Wade's office. If it happened through the Planning Commission, there'd be a plat drawn up, the plat would physically show where the septic field was vis-a-vis the property. So, it can, it can work either way. It just, again, it's, I hate to be, hate to be, it's fact-driven, it's-
Yeah, that is, that is a little such, and I hate to, I hate to vote for this without it being perfectly clear. Mr. Chairman, may I follow up?
Go ahead, sir.
There's a number of small businesses in the county that were, for the lack of a better term, country stores at one time. Now, they're, they're meeting places for the community, as well as country stores with the small deli-type operations in them, and the requirements for their sewage is much greater than it ever been. I can, but I won't, but I could probably name you a half a dozen of them right now. I don't want us to do anything that would preclude those type of endeavors from, if they could locate adjacent land, or land that someone would give them the right to put drain fields on, or something of this, in close proximity. I would hate to stop them from doing that, and-
I don't think, I don't think it would, Mr. Hancock, Commissioner. I think what it would do is, again, if it were a platted lot today, it would go to the Planning Commission under the old regulations, which, again, it was a variance to the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission simply doesn't have the power to grant a variance to the zoning ordinance. What we did was, we picked up that authority to vary that part, moved it into the subdivision regulations, where the Planning Commission clearly has the authority. As far as the circumstances, I could, I could argue that it might, in some ways, make it much simpler, because at that point, one of the problems, one of the longtime policy discussions for off-site septic have been, you know, it's great as long as you know and your neighbor knows where everything's at, but the moment that properties sell, you've got that concern about where this is. If you have it physically tied down with a map in the, you know, in the Register's office, which plating this would do, you're, you know, it, it solves a lot more problems, and not only that, it puts people on notice that you've got other issues. But, you know, we're, again, as far as what has changed in the law, you know, we're looking at it from a planning standpoint, but from how it works, that would be something that Mr. Robinson's department-
Mr. Chairman, if I might, one more follow-up.
Go ahead, sir.
So, Mr. Horn, staff, we're getting assurance from staff that this is not going to preclude this from, from being accomplished, if in fact, it meets that criteria that I spoke-
It should not, no, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on this resolution? See none? 106.14 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Excuse me. Commissioner Williams?
Excuse me for interrupting.
No problem.
I've been advised by counsel, and I was asking, answering, talking to Mr. Moon a while ago about the winery issue, to clarify that. I'm involved, and as a lawyer, in a couple of cases that involve wineries, and it's not that, and I voted, I don't think I have conflict of interest, but I voted my conscience and not, but that's what the situation is, and that's how I know, how I have that information.
When you say a couple of cases, do you mean it literally?
Figure figuratively.
Law, law cases. See, you got me in trouble.
Self-explanatory. Okay, let's move on to public hearing regarding Resolution Number 106.15, resolution to amend the Williamson County zoning ordinance, originally adopted April 18, 1988, regarding parking requirements. I'll open the public hearing. If you wish to address the commission as a part of this public hearing, if you would, please come forward to the microphone, give us your name and address, and we'll allow you to speak. Anyone? Public hearing is closed. We'll now entertain Resolution Number 106.15, resolution to amend the Williamson County zoning ordinance, originally adopted April 18, 1988, regarding parking requirements. Commissioner Walton?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Committee report, Commissioner Walton?
Planning Commission, eight-four-zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
What this does is change the language to allow, in commercial entertainment uses, for one parking space per three hundred square feet, instead of two hundred square feet. In a nutshell, that's it.
Any questions of Commissioner Walton on this resolution? I see none. Resolution 106.15 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. 106.16 has been pulled. Moving on to appropriations. Resolution Number 106.1, resolution appropriating $3,000, additional dollars in the 2005-06 general purpose school fund for the EdTech Orbit Grant received by Fairview Middle School. Commissioner Jones? Second, Commissioner Hewlett. Committee reports, school board was twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee? Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is a grant that was received by Fairview Middle School, and it's money coming in, and then they'll be using that.
Any questions of Commissioner Jones on this resolution? I see none. If you're in favor, 106.1, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted that wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 106.2, resolution transferring funds between categories for salary expenses for existing early childhood pre-K program. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hughes, the second. This was approved by the school board, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is basically, I guess, accounting where the state has come up with a new line or category, and we're moving the money from one, or transferring from one category to another.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Jones on this resolution? See none? Resolution 106.2 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted that wished to vote? Record of vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 106.3, resolution transferring funds between categories for salary expenses within the 2005-06 general purpose school fund. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Mills. School board approved, twelve, yes, zero, no. Education Committee?
Four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four-four, zero against, and one pass.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is where there has been some additional experience and some degrees that have occurred and at a later time, and also after the negotiated contract, there are some people entitled to some extra money for their experiences and degrees. Also, it has, there's also some vocational increase in here.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, what we're doing here, we're giving somebody a raise in the middle of the year. They didn't call it any way, the thing they want to, but it's a raise. In other words, a few years ago, Superintendent, he wanted to give the principals another, base salary of approximately $10,000. base salary of approximately $10,000. They got that, but he carried it through the regular budget procedure. Then the next year, the assistant principal's got approximately $10,000 increase base salary, but it was carried through the budget committee. If we start raising these people in a million, maybe a million a year, there's no way you can possibly control your budget. And some of these people, most of them are teachers. But what you've got to remember, the teacher's not on hourly wages, they're on a salary. Just like several years ago, there was four or five days of snow days that the state allowed the county not to make up. There wasn't any money refunded on those five days. The point I'm trying to make, we don't need to raise these people in the middle of the year, let it go through. They may deserve the money, but we need to let it go through the budget, budget process rather than approve it here tonight. And it's not right to do that because every time we meet, we're going to have people more money. Mr. Chairman, what I would like, I would like for every person in the administration that's getting some of this money, I'd like that name and how much money they're getting extra in the middle of the year. Thank you.
Other discussion on this resolution? So the request is to have a list of the names and the amount of money that's being allocated through this resolution to each of those individuals. That's the question. Go right ahead, Commissioner Lynch.
If you read this resolution, that gives you the impression that this happens every year. It does not. With exception of like when we adjusted the assistant, he acted as superintendent for a while and all like that, this has never come up in the county commission. We have never appropriated money in the middle of the year, million of the year. And what this boils down to, this is a poor financial way to use the taxpayer's money.
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked the same question as to why this was a mid-year increase, and it was indicated to the budget committee that this does not happen on a yearly basis in this situation because negotiations took place and the approval and pulling the data together happened until November 1. It was unable to get it into the projected budget for this year. And that was a question I raised at that time, was why can't we predict these things when we put the budget? And response I got was that, that they don't really know until they gather all the data as to those who completed further education and what have you. So that's the thought on the budget committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Hayes?
I concur with Commissioner Green when he asked that question, that was the response. May we hear from Superintendent or Ms. Holgum about, about her response?
Dr. Sharber?
Okay, great. I think we have that list. I did run off for you a copy of last year's contract administrators and this year's contract for administrators, which, yes, was approved by the board in June, but was not approved by the teachers until after the school year started. We do generally come back around this time of the year for a resolution that looks similar to this to try to balance out the vocational teachers and the regular classroom teachers because they're in different categories in the budget. And we don't always know, we never know when we plan the budget exactly how that's going to work out at the high schools until we have the students and until they get in all their classes. Also, sometimes we don't have to come back and make this kind of change to this degree because in years past, we haven't tightened down those instructional lines so much, but we worked really hard to tighten those down in the budget process this year, so there's not that much room in them. But this is probably the part that's maybe presenting the most problem for people, so I wanted to see what had happened in negotiations, which is something that we are obligated to live with. So if you can just kind of pass that on the side. This does not represent a large part of this resolution, but this probably represents the part that people are the most concerned about.
Dr. Sharber, what is this you're passing us?
What I'm passing you is on one side, you'll see the WCEA, WCBE contract 2004, 2005, central office staff salaries, and you'll see what's indicated there for 2004, 2005. Then on the reverse side, you'll see 2005, 2006. Now, it says tentative agreement, but this is what ended up being the agreement. And you'll see the difference in the central office staff salaries and how this played a part in what we're having to do here because we don't have that many central office people. We had to change some salaries, but there's not a lot of leeway in those budget lines in our budget because we don't have many people in them. And we tightened them down greatly, but this is why we were needing to do this part of
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had just wanted someone to speak to the issues that Commissioner Lynch had brought up, and I appreciate this information. So basically, when these, these changes occurred in, in their advanced degrees, by the time that information was completed, you had to use this, and you have to use this
Right.
... evaluation in terms of the description of the, of the salaries, then you have to make those changes based on those qualifications.
Right. And because it's part of the contract with the WCEA.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lynch, back to you.
I don't mean to disagree with anybody, but I've been on here a while, to my knowledge, this has never happened before. I would like to see the resolution in years past to show the same thing, were you raising people in the middle of the year? I've never seen that.
And, and I can't speak for every year. All I was saying in the past, what you would see was the vocational part, the part where we had to move some money to the vocational lines from the regular instruction. I can't tell you what's happened in terms of people's salaries in the middle of every year. I just know that's what we're dealing with this year. And the, the contract was not approved, it wasn't finished when we put the budget together. You know, every year we go through this, we have to put a budget together by law to give to you by April 1st. And we can't get all of our processes completed by April 1st every year, especially when we don't control them all ourselves at the central office.
Thank you. Commissioner Little? Question? Question been called for, motion seconded. All in favor of the call of questions, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question has been called, so we'll be voting on resolution 1063, transferring funds between categories for salary expenses. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty, yes, two, no.
Twenty, yes, and two, no. Resolution is adopted.
Some of these people are the highest-paid men in the system.
Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Parks and Recreation Budget by $200. Revenues to come from reserve fund. Commissioner Smith?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Little. Committee reports, Parks and Recreation Committee? No quorum.
No quorum.
Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Smith?
These are scholarship funds in the Hillsborough Community Reserve Fund of donated funds, so no taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner Smith on this resolution? I see none. 1064 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Twenty-two, yes. Resolution 106-5, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 library budget by $5,000 for due diligence, testing in Thompson Station. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hayes. Property committee report?
Seven, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a, in the 05-06 budget, we had $5,000 in there for the due diligence testing. Mr. Ritter has asked that we, we increase that by another $5,000. He doesn't anticipate spending all the $5,000, but he wants to be sure he has enough funds to do the complete due diligence on this property. As, as we learn on the due diligence as we go along, since we just started this, I think we'll, we'll find a more scientific way to come up with a number, but I think this is just an insurance that we have enough money to do this due diligence.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hayes?
I'd like to encourage the support of this resolution. We do need a library for a fast-growing area. We have a fine library in the Spring Hill area that is being enlarged, but we believe that in the future, the area down there will continue to grow, and it will be comparable to the, the size of the library in Franklin and the one in Brentwood. And so we don't need to, to be short-sighted in what we do for the area. I do think that, that we need to keep looking and searching to make sure that there is enough land, to stay visionary, to think outside the box and think, when we build the satellite areas around the county, we need to think of what they need in the way of meeting rooms, of what they need, need in the way of green spaces, what they need in plans for the future as far as expansion. And that's something that I think we will continue to, to look at. In speaking with Mayor Jackson, she very much is in favor of this resolution. We will continue to monitor. I'd like to encourage the highway, the highway board, the library board to look at possibly another meeting there of public information to find out what it is the people there are most interested in. There've been several meetings across the county in years past, but it's been a while since the one meeting there about that specific library. There are many things that we can do in order to hasten this as long, while the due diligence is being done. But I would encourage your support of this, and we will continue to try to make sure that we maximize this library for the residents of the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. Anything further? Any other questions of Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Brockman?
Commissioner Hayes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is a site that, that is viewed as, as appropriate. This resolution, Commissioner, is site-specific, and I think it will work. There are some other options that are, may be available. But rather than hold up anything, I think if we go ahead and prove this, if we have other things to come to light, we will certainly bring it back to this body in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Moon?
Chairman, I'd like to express my gratitude to the commission. When I saw the words "due diligence," it just warmed my heart. And hopefully, this will, this will prevent further oversights. I was concerned about $5,000 not being near enough to do all the different studies, but $10,000 should be adequate. And thank you all for including this procedure in our steps before we acquire property.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford?
I'm certainly going to vote for this and certainly think this is, $5,000 well-spent. I would like to ask, while we're appreciative of the donation of land from Thompson Station, is this the entire contribution that we're expecting from the town of Thompson Station? Or are we expecting further contributions towards construction and ongoing operations of the library?
Commissioner Hayes, would you address that, please?
With your permission, I would like to ask Mayor Jackson to come forth.
Mayor Jackson?
Don't want to put you on too much of a spot. Well, I can't speak totally for our board. Obviously, the land donation has been a start. The county mayor and I have spoken about some possibilities through some permit fees, some other fees. We're working with the developer. This, this piece of land did not have actual road built to it. I'm working with them now to get that built. So we're going to continue to work. We desperately need a library in Thompson Station. We've been working since about 1993 or '94 with a community library where volunteers work. And as all of you know, in a lot of the areas, you grow that library to a certain point, and then you either step up to another level or you regress. And we unfortunately are in the regression stage right now. And Thompson Station, we are small, we are having a little bit of growth, so we have a few more dollars to deal with. And trust me, we will do what we can to promote this library and, and move it forward.
Thank you. Further questions, Commissioner? Thank you. Commissioner Hancock? Question been called for, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very well. Question's been called on resolution 1065. If you're in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number 1066, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 animal control budget by $25,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Langston?
Move approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hayes. Public Health Committee report?
Four, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Budget committee?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Langston?
Yes, this is the amount of money necessary to begin operation of the addition to the Animal Control Center that's ready to operate, and this will represent half a year's budget for this, this operation.
Very well. Any questions of Commissioner Langston on this resolution? See none? 1066 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Two, yes. Resolution 10619 has been pulled. Resolution 10620, resolution in support of fiscal year 2006, community development block grant application and amending the 2005-6 capital projects budget by 300,000. Commissioners Hancock and Hester?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Budget committee report, Commissioner Green?
Five, four, zero, against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioners Hancock and Hester?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, this may be hard for some in this room to believe, but we still have areas in this county that don't have potable water. These areas are on the backside of the ridge, or on the Duck River side, so to speak, of the ridge that Pinewood Road runs on top of, and it's down the other side of the ridge from, basically from where the landfill is. A lot of people have been having problems with their springs, they've been drying up where they never used to dry up years ago, and, and this money appears to be available through a block grant. At this time, it looks like that there would be no actual county tax dollars put into this because HBNTS has partnered with the county to try to make this happen, and we can get the $300,000 block grant and the $170,000 local match that they're getting from Rural Development Agency. I don't anticipate having to come back to this body for additional money, but if we did, it would certainly be something that we needed to do. I don't think that's going to happen. I would appreciate your support for this, and we'll move forward with it, and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hester?
I also believe that the residents in this area need city water, and I support this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Moon?
My question, Mr. Chairman, is, is there, is there not going to be county money at any time now in the future? any time now in the future expended on a private utility district of which we have no control and no input, that charges the fees at whatever they want? And if so, if we are going to spend county money, are we going to share in the revenue the tap fees that this utility district charges? For example, probably around two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollars per house, tap fee. If we're going to pay out, do we get the money back in?
Good question. Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moon, as you have said, we do not, excuse me, as Mr. Hancock has said, Mr. Moon, we do not plan on doing this. This is through the USDA, some federal money. This particular incident, we've been working on it for well over a year, and we've become just the conduit for this. HBNTS is actually the instrument, the two commissioners here, it happens to be in their area. But there were many, many fingers involved on this, and John and Ms. Hester happened to be the recipients of this, and there'll probably be some in the third a little later on. But currently, it's all being done through USD grant and through HBNTS.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes?
County mayor just mentioned what I was getting ready to say. It's hard for us to believe, but there are others in this county who have the same difficulty, and I hope we'll see this in other areas.
Commissioner Hancock, back to you.
If I might respond to Commissioner Moon just briefly. It's, I understand what he's saying, but again, this is grant money, and it is somewhat refreshing to see a rural utility district step up to the plate and take the initiative, as they have shared in this initiative with us all along the way. They could do many other things with this rural development money, but they have, they spared no effort in putting this together. It's something we need to do.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brockman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'm reiterating what Commissioner Hayes has said, and that is, is this an opportunity for other areas of the community? There's a particular area in my district that would love to pair up with a utility, private utility through a grant to provide water down that road. And I did not know this is available, and I just wondered what particular criteria had to be met for that grant. Just...
Mayor?
I'm sorry. Yes.
Mr. The way that that flows, first of all, it's a long, laborious process. First of all, the utility company must be willing and agreeable to doing this.
Right.
In this particular case, working through the USDA and through our representative side of Washington, they were very instrumental in getting some of that money through, through the United States Department of Agriculture that flows down to the state level. The state representative happens to live in our county and was very agreeable in working with us. There are, there's about seventy-four, seventy-plus families that will be directly affected by this up in this particular area. There's some qualifications for it, for some of the commissioners here that have been around a while. It's based on income.
Okay.
The income numbers in this particular area, we had some public meetings on them. Help me out, Diane. Two, three. Couple of public meetings, too, that I know we have to meet some of the requirements. In Williamson County, making the income numbers is a very difficult chore, and so we have to block out ways to do that. If I, if my memory serves me correct, in order to get on this and be qualified for it, it had to be less than twenty-five thousand dollars per household. And it's hard to believe you can live in our county, but these are people in our community. There will be some more folks as we go down the pipeline that will be looking at this. Now, to answer your question about the grant processes, HBNTS actually stepped up, and we were talking to them. I know John and prior to John, and we talked to these people. We had a lady out there that went door to door. Because if you send an attorney out or you send me out, no one's going to talk to you. You've got to have someone that's a neighbor, someone that you feel comfortable with, because you've got to show two years worth, I think it was two years worth of financial statement. It's not an easy process to get these, Mary, but...
Yeah, you answered my question.
Very difficult and been a long process getting to this point. But I appreciate what Tom is saying, because we certainly don't want to get into a situation where we're subsidizing utility.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Chaffin?
Move for the question. Call a question.
The second?
Second.
Mr. Williams, second on the motion. All in favor of call a question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, 106.20 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. If anybody voted, wish to vote. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Twenty-two, yes. Resolution 106.23, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-'06 Archives budget by four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Revenues to come from State of Tennessee grant. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Lynch, the second. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, please?
This is a grant to the Williamson County Archives in an amount of four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to purchase supplies and equipment to aid in the preservation arrangement and description of endangered and previously inaccessible local permanent records.
Good. Any questions, Commissioner Green? Can you do that again? C nine, 106.23 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. If everybody voted, wish to vote. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. 106.24, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-'06 Highway Department budget by fifty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from grant funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Walton, the second. The Highway Commission adopted this. Five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is a grant to, for funding of a local highway and road projects for the construction and installation of a guardrail on Pultite Hill.
Very well. Any questions? If you've not had a chance to drive through Pultite, please do that, because it's a significant improvement. 106.24 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. If everybody voted, wish to vote. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-two, yes. Resolution 106.26, resolution appropriating and amending various county general budgets by fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated fund balances. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please?
This is a resolution to cover the increased expenses of gasoline and fuel for the balance of the 2005-2006 budget in the amount of fifty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And I might add that as you look at these numbers on the various line items, these departments went through and tried to find areas within their own budgets they could appropriate some monies to offset the cost. And these are the costs that they anticipated needing for the balance of the year. Also, they were put on notice that these monies will not be available for transfer to any other line item, and if they do not spend all this money, it goes back to the fund balance.
Thank you, sir. Other questions? Any questions of Commissioner Green on this resolution for county general? C nine, 106.26 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. If everybody voted, wish to vote. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. 106.27, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-'06 landfill and convenience center budgets by sixty thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated fund balances. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please?
This is resolution appropriating and amending the balance of the 2005-2006 to cover the cost of gasoline expenses, diesel expenses, in the amount of sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. Any questions? C nine, in favor of this resolution, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Commissioner Green? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 106.28, appropriating and amending the 2005-'06 Highway Department budget by two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Revenues to come from unappropriated highway fund balance. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Langston, the second. Highway Commission approved this. Five, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Mr. Green?
This again is from the Highway Department, amending their budget by two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to cover the balance of the year on the increased cost of gasoline and diesel, and basically for the balance of this year.
Any questions, Commissioner Green? C nine, 106.28 is up for consideration. In favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote?
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 106.29, resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-'06 tourism budget by seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Revenues to come from state grant. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton. Budget Committee report?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please?
This is a grant through the Tennessee Department of Tourism for the amount of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to utilize the activities and expenses of visitors who are related to the tourism conference in Williamson County. No county money is involved.
Very well. Any questions, Commissioner Green? C nine, 106.29 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-two, yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 168 has been pulled. Resolution number 106.18, resolution to permit the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Agricultural Exposition Center for an event of the Nashville Kennel Club. Commissioner Cook's not here. Commissioner Ford, would you like to? Commissioner Ford, move for approval. Second, Commissioner Brockman. Budget Committee report?
Four, four, zero against. One abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford, explanation, please, sir?
This is a resolution that we see periodically, and it permits the serving of alcoholic beverages at the Expo Center. Within our current law, we, anytime there's alcoholic beverages served on county property, we have to approve this.
Thank you, sir. Any, any questions of Commissioner Ford on this resolution? C nine, if you're in favor, 106.18, press the yes button. Opposed, you no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Eighteen, yes. Two, no. Two abstain.
Eighteen, yes. Two, no. Two abstentions. The resolution is adopted. Resolution number 106.22, a resolution to approve a pilot payment in lieu of taxes program for American Healthways, Inc., as requested by the Industrial Development Board of Williamson County. This has been sponsored by multiple people. I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Wilson, motion. Commissioner Brockman, the second. The Industrial Development Board adopted this. Five, four, zero against. Property Committee?
Four, four, one against.
Thank you. Tax Study Committee? Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Wilson?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we have representatives here, and I would defer to Gail Moyer-Harris, please.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the commission, I am privileged to serve as chairman of the Industrial Development Board for Williamson County, and this is a pilot or an incentive package that has been in negotiations for an extended period of time. We are presenting this to you. The Industrial Development Board did seriously study. We never like to bring anything to the county unless it has met some very rigorous considerations. The Industrial Development Board has developed actually a lengthy criteria of components for consideration before we would ever bring this to you. It includes items such as the caliber of jobs, opportunities for increasing revenues, and strengthening the economic development base of our county. We think that this more than meets the components of that consideration. There has been different discussions about, first of all, the effect of this particular site, per se, for having an incentive. As you know, the city of Franklin has developed its first tax increment financing area, and this particular piece of property lies within that. And there was some consideration of, would this upset the city of Franklin's planning procedure under their first TIF involving the Nissan relocation? Tonight, I report to you that the Budget and Finance Committee of the city of Franklin approved this unanimously. The only comment was regarding that particular fact or question that I have raised with you, and it was stated by the officials of the city of Franklin that they were very much involved in these negotiations with American Healthways and had taken into consideration this particular possibility, so that, that now, I think, answers that particular concern. One of the factors that really sold me on American Healthways, and we do have two of their officers here tonight that I would like to introduce in just a moment. As you know, the strategic plan for economic development of Williamson County stresses and urges that we look to the healthcare industry for one of the strengths of our economic program here in Williamson County. American Healthways brings to us a completely different side of the healthcare industry. They are not your typical healthcare provider as we know it. They do something way beyond the typical healthcare, and that is, they're in disease management. And as we are getting older, living longer, learning more about our bodies and our different diseases, this is one of probably the top areas of concern for our aging population, and they are the corporation that has taken that issue head-on and have become number one in that particular field. That also brings me to the final point that I'm so excited about. Besides just the healthcare industry at large, we have focused, and you have been very supportive in the field of our Life Sciences Center, biomed, biotech, whatever phrase that you would like to use. American Healthways now brings to us a partnership. They deal with many, many companies, officials, entrepreneurs that are in the biomed, biotech field just by the nature of their disease management and the new things that are coming on board. We see this as a win-win, particularly for us, because we will have a chance to be almost first in line to meet these people as they come in to discuss their products and their services with American Healthways. I have used the term "American Healthways" because it appears on your resolution, but as we've been negotiating and working with this company, they have changed their name. They are now Healthways. They are international in scope, and this more represents the way they're doing business and recognizes their international scope. Tonight, I have in the audience, and they're certainly willing to speak to any questions that any of you commissioners may have on this... that any of you commissioners may have on this project, but we do have two officers. We have Glenn Hargreaves and Dennis Jackson, who are here, and able to speak to any of your concerns. If there's no further questions, I would encourage you to vote in support of this pilot project.
Thank you, Gail. Ms. Hargreaves, would you stand up? Ms. Dennis Jackson, these gentlemen are here. If anyone has any questions. Commissioner Williams?
I really wanted to address this to Ms. Harris, if I could. I'm sorry for having called you to get up.
I've heard it said, and I've heard it, maybe you saw it in print, and I've heard it said, and I talked to you about this before. Why should we, as a body, give them a break, tax break, when it's at least rumored, or been some statements made that they were coming to Williamson County anyway?
I'm glad you asked that, Mr. Williams, and I'm sorry I didn't address that I meant to. That has certainly been an item that has been discussed even at some of the committee-level meetings that has addressed this particular project. As you know, American Healthways does have a location in the Green Hills area, and because of their growth, they certainly have grown beyond that. They even have a call center here in Williamson County, so they're not new to our community. But I will assure you, Commissioner Williams, that as we have worked for months on this project, we are very much aware, those of us that have been engaged in the negotiations, that this is not a done deal. Williamson County was not the only site, the Cool Springs site, the Williamson County site, was not the only site being considered. If you had had the opportunity to look at some of the documents that were negotiated with the developer of this property on behalf of American Healthways, the contingencies were lined up strong, that this was not a done deal. It was dependent on the matter that's before the county commission tonight and the city of Franklin tomorrow. As many of you know, if you have watched some of the growth of some of the major corporations in Davidson County, Williamson County does bid out those very strongly, and I will say to each one of you commissioners, we do not always win. We have a neighbor to the north of us that have a lot more resources than we do, and on many occasions, Davidson County, through an excellent mayor that would like to keep these corporations, has usurped what we thought was an entry of these corporations into Williamson County. So I can assure the commissioners that we were considered, we were not the only site being considered, and certainly, it was a contingency that this was to be brought before this board.
If we didn't approve this resolution, would they still come?
I do not know. They are here and could probably speak to that if you'd like for me to yield the floor to them.
I would.
Commissioner? Clearly, the speaking objectively from the terms of the lease, there is a contingency in the lease we're negotiating, that in the event that this pilot does not pass, that we have the ability to withdraw from that lease or not to execute it. That's on a, speaking to an attorney, and not being one. The other factor is, this is a very important attribute. It's a very important event to the company and our executive leadership. Notwithstanding the financial impact, but it's a, it's clearly a signal from the county to us. It's a welcome, it's an embrace, and there's a certain sentiment that very much respects and the meaning of this incentive and the importance to the company. I can't say what we would do. I can say that it would be a significant shock wave, and we'll have significant discussions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, as a member of one of the committees that took a look at this early on, a few weeks back, this certainly fits the model of staying on the leading edge. You know, Nashville, middle Tennessee, this region is somewhat known worldwide for being leaders in the healthcare field. You know, we have great corporations that have already moved out of other states and as they consolidated and moved into Nashville. I think this fits our model of being on the leading edge and staying on the leading edge. I think it fits our model. It's looking to the future and not the past. Everything that we, we've seen and heard about this company and committee would lead one to believe that they're on the cutting edge of what they do, and that the, the medical fields and endeavors are going in their direction, and they're well positioned to not only be a national leader, but be a world leader in these efforts. I'd also like to say that I was impressed, Mr. Chairman, if I could, with their commitment to the community that they now live in, that they now are domiciled in. They have been very, very active participant, corporate participant in many activities that have went on in that community, and really, they could be a model for many other corporations and many other businesses as to stepping up to the plate and, and taking part in what's going on in that community. I hope that this passes. I think that we have, we have certainly, our Industrial Development Board has certainly done their homework. There's a lot of companies out there that would like to come, but I think, I think we're definitely with Nissan, and now with this one, and hopefully others that come down the road, we're doing some very good chair picking, and that's, that's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Moon?
I may be right. Mr. Chairman, please correct me on this. Is, is the building going to be located, the physical plant, on the east side of the interstate by McEwen Drive? Does anybody know where it's going to be?
Yes, sir. It's in the corner of Cool Springs Boulevard.
Carruthers.
Carruthers. So it's on the east side of the interstate. It would be on the opposite corner of Mary Ann Cupp and the Coop.
Well, that, yeah, that helps me. That's in our district, the fourth district, and this has nothing to do with y'all, but maybe if anybody out there in television land is listening, the governor or T-Dot, we desperately need Highway 96 East to be completed. Between the Nissan and this company, we're going to have over 500 new employees, and we need a major east-west corridor, especially going from Triune to I-65 East. I don't know who I have to call. They won't return my phone calls, but please, put the politics aside and finish the expansion of Highway 96 East through the fourth and fifth district. Governor, you out there? Thank you.
Commissioner Walton?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, through you, could I ask these gentlemen a question, and they can answer from their seat? In which county do you live?
Williamson County. Williamson, yes.
Thank you. And that makes my point. They're here, but their business is not here, and that, that's what we're doing. This stands ahead, to me, above some of the other projects that are here. There won't be a big influx of new employees coming in, because a lot of these, their office now is, I understand, in Green Hills, so a lot of these people live in Williamson County, so we're moving to get tax dollars from, from a new construction, new building, and to move here. And I, I think it's just a win-win situation all the way around, and I urge your support.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. When I was reading this, and I wasn't too sure of what he was saying, I called my confidante. I called Mr. Coleman. I'd already talked to Ms. Hayes about it, but I called Mr. Coleman, and I said, "Tell me about this. If this is something that you would actually recommend for the county," since we had done that other. And he gave me some points, and I would like to ask Mr. Coleman just to get up and say the same thing that he told me, and I'm certainly going to vote for this.
Mr. Chairman, the items that I spoke to Ms. Mills about earlier, and I think I brought the same ones up at our budget meeting the other day, with the three, this being the third agreement this fall and summer that we've dealt with, I see three things financially that are positive in this particular arrangement, and number one, that's already been mentioned by Commissioner Walton, that is, I believe, around 40 to 45 percent of their employees already live in Williamson County. This will have less of a financial impact on our school system, because we won't have as many new children coming into the county as we have in some of the other arrangements. As in all of the arrangements, we have protected the school property tax rate. This agreement is a 55 percent payment, 45 percent abatement, so the school property tax is protected. And the third item is the fact that this arrangement, the capital outlay is $50 million compared to the $30 million of community health services, and even though it's a 10-year arrangement, they will probably pay out in about six years, the maximum $2 million, city and county, so that will put them on the roll that much quicker at paying 100 percent for their property tax.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was going to say that in our, one of our committee meetings, the question that Mr. Williams brought up about, is it a done deal? It was actually said, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there were some members of your corporation that was hesitant from moving from Davidson County. Is that correct?
That is accurate, that we have a long history in Green Hills, and people become comfortable with the commutes and the, you know, as you know, where you, where you spend your time. This is a big decision for the company. It's a big decision for the employees of the company, of the bank, of the, so that kind of does carry out.
One other point, I don't know how many of you saw CBS News tonight, but our county was spotlighted, along with Spring Hill and the Smyrna area, and the Nissan site was shown on CBS National News tonight. So, you know, there might be more coming down the pipeline.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up a point that I, I did bring up at the meeting when we had the joint committee meetings. My point is that I have had, and still do have, a medical background, and I just wanted to say that this is very important. When you talk about diseases, diabetes, various other cancers, things like this, folks, these are areas that affect our community a lot, and all of us want to find cures. And I think, as Gail Moyer-Harris mentioned, the partnerships that we have with the biotech areas and with a company of this quality, who has a proven record, I think it's most important that we encourage businesses that would like to come to this area, and I certainly would approve of, of doing this, and I hope that you will vote yes on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Hayes?
In keeping with what Ms. Harris had indicated about the name change, may I address a question to the Chair and Council, please? Does that mean that we need to amend this for book housekeeping in order to change that name for, to make it absolutely correct?
No, we, we discussed that with Council, and that will be done as a part of the closing of this agreement, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to be sure.
Good point. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm certainly in favor of, of this deal. I think it's a good deal for the county. I do have a question for this particular deal, and then any others that may come after it. One of the interesting things for us is there's a hope of 600 new jobs, but I don't see anything in the agreement if the jobs don't materialize, and maybe we should be considering that for future agreements. Corporations being what they are, they come and they go, they can fold pretty quickly at times. I don't think that's going to happen in this case, but it could, and we do need to look after the interest of the county.
Mayor Anderson, or David, would you like to address that question? Is, what guarantees, if any, of the 600 jobs that are in the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would have to agree that, you know, the 600 jobs is an estimate they've given us. I, I think will be there, but there, there are no guarantees there, but there will be a guarantee in the agreement that there, if there's ownership change or pullout, that the pilot goes back to full 100 percent.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To me, the two questions, when I looked at this, is, are, the ones that Commissioner Williams asked, number one, would they come anyway? That's the first question. The second question is, would this property have been developed anyway? And if that property were to be developed anyway, would we be able to receive 100 percent property tax from that property, from the use of that property, and would that happen? And then when I thought through these, the answer to both of those was, maybe. Maybe they'll come anyway. Maybe that property will be developed, but I believe that we are not elected to go on maybes. Here, we've got a corporation who's coming in, who's going to be in here for 10 years by this agreement. They're going to be at that property. We know who's going to be there. We know what type of company, and like Ms. Harris said, they mesh very well with what other companies are here. We, this abatement here is less than 5 percent of the abatement that we have passed along to Nissan. 1.6 million is estimated to be our, 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 our part of that versus the 32 million that we, that we presented for Nissan. If we were to look back at this 15, 20 years down the road, and looked at the number of new companies that are going to spin out of this type of company, the number of new jobs, the number of new industries that are going to spin out of this, this deal on a per-dollar basis will be much more valuable to the county than will the Nissan deal. I recommend your approval.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Little?
Mr. Chairman, as the only commissioner who hasn't spoken on this amendment, I mean, resolution, I'd, I'd like to call the question.
Sir, second? All in favor of the call of question, say aye. Opposed, call the question, it's been adopted. There's one other person that's in the audience that I'd like to recognize and have the Commission thanking for being involved and working with this. Bob, I ought to come, stand up, please. Bob does a wonderful job working to put this together, and Bob, thank you for all your efforts. Resolution 10622 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press the yes button. Opposed, you know button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty, yes. One abstention, and one no.
Twenty, yes. One abstention, and one no. So resolution is adopted this evening. That concludes our business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Meeting is adjourned.